We'll go ahead and get started. The first thing we have on the docket here is a budget hearing, budget adoption hearing. Tara, do you have anything to add to that? Or do we have any questions about that?
I'm just bringing before you the 2026 budget, the bus replacement plan, and the capital project plan that's gone over at the last board meeting to get your approval. And if you have questions, I will answer them.
You're answered. Does anyone have any questions on any of those three items? Hearing no questions, I would entertain a motion to accept those as presented.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Justice. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Ellis, are there any questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor? Opposed? Passes unanimous. All three. Thank you very much. That will be the end of that hearing.
No, I have two more.
You have two more. Two more resolutions. Okay, go ahead. Yes, go ahead.
We are also bringing to you tonight a resolution to transfer funds. This is our education to operation fund transfer. Seeking your approval tonight to do that for next year.
Do we have any questions on the transfer of funds?
Will it be staying at the 15%? Or do we anticipate overshooting that?
We always, Dr. Quinn, try to stay under, but you don't want to be on that list two years in a row. So we were on the naughty list last year.
Yeah, we've been trying to do it every other year for a number of years now since it came to fruition. So I was just curious of where we are.
Yeah, I would, I would, I would say we will try to stick with that philosophy in practice so we can stay in compliance with the state.
Thank you. Any other questions? If none, I will entertain a motion to accept that as presented.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Justice. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Pennington. Any comments? All those in favor? Is unanimous. Thank you. Next.
And then I'm also bringing the budget resolution to you. This is seeking your approval to make necessary adjustments on the budget according to the 1782 notice that will come out in December. This is just if we need to lower, we can, we can do that.
Any question? I'm sorry. Any questions from the board?
What is the 1782 notice?
That is where they give us our tax rebate rate, the official one.
Thank you.
I would, I would jump in there too. And I appreciate Mr. Hoover, he called me earlier today. If you look on the budget, the first, the first document, and you know, it lists a dollar sixty-six tax. And so he called and said, well, you know, what, why is that? And you base your budget kind of to Tara's point on assumed AV numbers, things that you don't have in your hand at the time when you make the budget. So in a short narrative, you budget high because you're allowed to come down. But if you budget low, you can't go up. And so although that says a dollar sixty-six, they will structure most of that increase, again, that's theoretical, comes from the debt service. Once we have actual numbers in our hands, then they structure our first year's payments to where that rate comes down. And that's why we've said and maintained that we're going to remain tax neutral. So to Tara's point, that's a little bit of backstory on, on that process.
Thank you, Mr. Ford. Anything else? Hearing nothing else, I would entertain a motion to accept that as presented.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Justice. Second?
Second.
Mr. Ellis, any other questions? All those in favor? Is unanimous. Thank you very much. That is it. That will conclude the budget hearing for 2026 budget. Our next thing will be at 6:30. So we will take a little bit of a break and then we'll be back and start the hearing for that. Thank you all. We'll go ahead and get started here. The next thing on the, on the list is a additional appropriation hearing, a lease hearing. Mr. Ford, if you have anything?
Thank you, Mr. Bailey. The school corporation is funding this project for a lease financing as it has done with other past construction slash renovation projects. Lease financings are used by school corporations across the state of Indiana in order to borrow for renovation and construction. Additionally, the school corporation will, will receive money for the sale of the real estate to the building corporation. Since this money was not initially listed in the school corporation's annual budget, the school corporation is required to hold a hearing for the additional appropriation of those funds.
It is now time for the board to hold the lease and additional appropriation hearing in connection with the proposed project. If you are interested in speaking at the hearing, please make sure you have signed the sign-in sheet, which should include your name and address. After the presentation, there will be an opportunity for the public to make comments about the lease rental to be paid under the lease and appropriation of bond proceeds. At this hearing, we will ask that each person limit their comments to three minutes and that the topic be limited, topics be limited to the lease rental appropriation of funds under the consideration. The notices for this hearing were published legally as required. Pursuant to Indiana Code 20-47-3, before a school corporation may enter into a lease with a nonprofit building corporation, the school corporation must conduct a hearing regarding the execution of the proposed lease agreement and whether the rental to be paid to the lesser building corporation under the proposed lease is a fair and reasonable rental for the proposed improvements. Similarly, before a school corporation can appropriate any dollars it directly receives as bond proceeds, it must conduct a hearing on those proceeds for the additional appropriation of funds. We will now hear from Mr. McCormick about the proposed projects related to the lease and additional appropriation.
Thank you, Mr. Bailey. There are several dynamics that have brought us to this point in time. Our two elementary buildings are in great need of necessary upgrades and renovations. This came to light as part of our recent facility assessment that was carried out with, with Gibraltar. Additionally, our school board members, principals, and directors met in early September of 2024 to discuss our district's facility needs. We've had many planning meetings over the past 12 months leading up, us up to this point. Currently, we do not have a transportation hub and our maintenance building is beyond repair. So that's one of the focuses of this project. Several years ago, the district decided to create a presence at what we now know as the North Complex. The opportunity to purchase the Roxy Theater property will provide several strategic moves for our district, including continuing the vision of the North Complex, create a much-needed and professional transportation and maintenance hubs, move central office to the North Complex, and sell the downtown building. Also, this decision will provide a number of other benefits such as secure bus fleet parking, opportunity to secure better bus fuel pricing, nice and professional restroom facilities for the soccer complex, guaranteed parking for our athletic events at the North Complex, ability to, to carry out light bus maintenance projects, and a new large space to hold professional meetings, be it school or, and/or community type meetings. We will also be addressing the old Junior High with plans to take down the two-story west wing and make slight upgrades to other parts of that building for other programming needs. In summary, we will be addressing much-needed repairs across our district while also creating new state-of-the-art learning and workspaces for our staff and students.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCormick. We will now open the public hearing. Remember, if you would like to speak, please make sure that you're signed in on the sheet, which is now here. Make sure that you are, your name and address. Limit your comments to the proposed rent to be paid under the lease and appropriation of bond proceeds. Keep any comments to three minutes and avoid being repetitive if possible. Seeing the sign-in sheet now, there are no names on that sheet. Would anybody like to speak? Anyone?
This is for the appropriation, right?
That's correct, yes. Hearing none, I guess we can close this out. Thank you all for reading, for participating, and we'll take action on this later on in the meeting. We will now close this hearing and open our regular meeting. Thank you.
Okay. If y'all rise, we'll do a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of British Commons, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Acceptance of the agenda. We entertain a motion to accept that as presented. Thank you, Ms. Justice. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ellis. Any questions or additions? All those in favor? Is unanimous. Thank you. Approval of the minutes for the September meeting?
Motion to accept.
Thank you, Ms. Justice. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Pennington. Any questions or additions or corrections?
No.
Hearing none. All those in favor? It is unanimous. Thank you. Next up, we have a public comment and somebody bring me that. First up, we have Night Gale Truax.
Okay, hi. Emily sent you the slides earlier. The first one is Ms. Murphy and Mrs. Wright, their buddy class, which is a program Mrs. Hall set up. They do academic things, like different classes from different grades, and they do academic things together. They do things, fun activities together. I think, I think it's pretty incredible. I mean, you know, kids helping other kids and learning new experiences from other new kids, and that's a really cool program. And Mrs. Hall did good with that one.
The next one is Ms. Warren. They were learning about Ellis Island, and so her students created a suitcase like they were going on the trip to Ellis Island, and they had to pick five things that they would take with them on the trip. And then they had to write a journal entry based in the 1900s to correlate with the Ellis Island. So, and then they were able to present it and showcase their knowledge of it, so.
Thank you, guys. Next up, Mr. Morris.
I do want to start off by saying you guys do have some fantastic teachers, a wonderful staff. Some of the teachers that do talk to us, some of them have reached out over the last week or two, and you know, they tell us they support what we're trying to do. But at the same time, they're, they're feeling the strain of the situation. They're, you know, kind of feel like by association, you know, they're, it's kind of reflecting on them. And I do, I feel terrible about that. I truly do. My goal never has been to make proof schools look bad, but to cause change, we have to bring things to the forefront. You know, I have to stand up here and give it my all. I can't give up until the change happens. And honestly, I know that there are people that think certain ways about me. I know I brought that up before. The Holy Spirit in me won't let me get away from this until we have a resolution. I am a child of God. I'm not a staff member anymore, and I can stand up here and say this. I am a child of God, saved by the blood of Jesus Christ. The Holy Spirit in me is pushing me forward with this. It's pushing our organization, everybody that's a member of our board of Voice of Through Parents, they're born again Christians. None of us are perfect. I'm nobody important, and they're not important people, but together, we are coming together for what we believe to be a good and righteous cause. You know, we have, you know, parents that come to us with stories when they feel like they don't have anywhere else to go. Right now, we have stories that we haven't posted, posted anywhere because the parents are still trying to work things out with administrators, which is what we want. We want them to try that first, but if these stories end up being posted publicly, it's only because they didn't find a resolution through the administrators, which is why we want this administrative oversight committee. And a committee that would operate outside of the authority of the superintendent and the principals, they would answer only to the school board. I don't want anything to do with this committee. Our organization doesn't want anything to do with it. We just know it needs to exist. And I know we went back and forth about the legalities of it, but I promise, there's nothing about it that's illegal or violates student privacy laws. I've got things that even in the, the short little outline that we provided about redacting names and all that to keep it legal. The school board, each and every one of you, this is, you have the power to make this happen. You are the directors, the board of directors for Proof Community Schools. This is on you. And if you truly believe that this committee would be illegal or that I want anything to do with it, as you know, I, I just know it needs to exist, and I, I believe the teachers would be great in that capacity to oversee that, and they would answer directly to the school board. I know it would be a great thing for the students. That's all I've got to say. God bless you guys. Don't take it over, please. If you think it's illegal, you're being deceived. It's not illegal. You need to look out, reach, reach out and to attorneys yourselves. You need to really do your due diligence. It's, it's not illegal. And if you know already that it's not illegal, then what's stopping you? It's only good for the students.
Thank you, Mr. Morris. Bridget Richardson.
Bridget Richardson.
I have a question. Who all here has kids in prude schools? Show hands. Okay, quick question. What if one of those kids came home, bruises on their face, arm, whatever, and they said, "I got bullied in school"? What are you guys gonna do? You guys gonna stand up for your kids, right? Your grandkids. That's exactly what we're trying to do. If you guys can't hear us, then what makes us think that it's safe enough for our children to attend your school? Honestly. You guys have these drills, which we all got notification of, the active shooter drill. You guys are preparing for something that's about to happen. Why not prevent it? And still, committee, that's the only thing. We're asking to give the power back to our kids, not to you guys.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson. Next on the agenda, we have recognition of PCS transportation employees. Mr. McCormick?
Thank you, Mr. Beatty. I'll turn the floor over to Mr. Snyder and Mr. Potts. You guys would like to, we're gonna share a feel-good, a couple feel-good stories surrounding a couple of recent events that our transportation folks stepped up big time, so.
We had a meeting before break, kind of instituted by this Brooke back here for our drivers, just singing their praises. All of our drivers are top-notch. Doesn't matter what route they drive or anything. They're some of the best in the state, and we recognized them as a staff a week or so ago. But I wanted to point out to you guys. On September 15th, we had a pretty bad bus accident on Mexico Road on the Yale River Bridge. Our driver, Amy Miller, did a phenomenal job with that situation. When I arrived on site and saw that bus up against the guardrail of the bridge, the only thing that went through my head was, this could have been so much worse. She had such control of that bus, she had compassion for those kids, for the other, for the driver of the other vehicle. She handled it expertly, and I can only attribute the safety to all those kids to her skill as a driver.
Is she here this evening?
She is not.
Okay.
And then, I think it was October 3rd, about 4:15 in Friday afternoon, I get a call from Central Dispatch, bus accident on US 31, not our bus. Another school transporting a junior high cross-country team had been in an accident, and they needed help. My first call was to Brooke Killian back here. It's like, can you do something? Can you help out? She's like, I'm on my way. She and her daughter Emma were on their way to dinner, gave up their dinner plans, grabbed the bus, came and grabbed that team who was on their way to Terre Haute from Goshen. And I can't...
I mean, just so you know, when I pulled up, Mr. Snyder was already there, but the state troopers had 31 North and Southbound shut down. They, the car that pulled and veered in front of their minibus was smashed, the whole side. It was being hauled away, and the minibus was being loaded up onto, you know, a wrecker trailer and hauled away. All, that was what I saw when I pulled up.
Yeah, and so Brooke had gone and grabbed the bus and...
Brooke and Emma, can you please stand up?
Loaded those kids on.
Come over here.
And Mr. McCormick showed up, and he had already been in contact with the other school superintendent and asked Brooke if she was prepared to go to Terre Haute. And the look on her face, and she was like, uh, Friday night, Terre Haute? Um, okay. And it's like, no, they were only going to Plainfield to a hotel to continue their drive. And so Brooke and Emma took that team to Kokomo. They were planning to stop for dinner, got into their dinner, and then Ms. Rosanna grabbed a different bus, met them in Kokomo, and took them on down to Plainfield. And so just the compassion that our drivers have, not only for our own students, but for any student in any situation. Like I said, these ladies gave up their Friday nights to not only go to Kokomo but on to Indianapolis for an entirely different school corporation in need. And so Rosanna was supposed to drive to Indianapolis the next morning anyway, to Lucas Oil. Mr. Jack stepped up and took that route instead. So we had a big effort between these three ladies and Jack, who came to the aid of another school and just shows the tiger pride, the PCS pride that we have, and not only helping our own, but whoever else is in need around us. So I just wanted to say thank you to these four back here. Glad to, from Fairfield. I know Mr. McCormick had received emails and correspondence from Fairfield in that situation, so. But just thank you for stepping up, and yes, I do owe you guys dinner still. And they were on their way to Viva Brady's, and they ended up with the Zolies instead, I think, that night. So, little bit of a trade-off, but, but again, just very appreciative of your efforts to step up and help out where needed.
Of course.
And we did this, I returned from vacation, this was in my office. So this is from Fairfield Community Schools. "Mr. McCormick and staff, here are some treats from our neck of the woods. Thank you for going above and beyond for our students. It truly takes a village." Dr. Kerry Cannon and the Fairfield Community School School Board. So I have not dug into this, past the blue tissue paper. There does appear to be a lot of nice treats down in here, so I will turn this over to Mr. Snyder and Mr. Potts to distribute to the bus drivers.
You guys can clap a little.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to the program section. Mr. McCormick, can you please summarize our resolution authorizing the execution of lease?
Thank you. As required by Indiana Code 20-47-3, after a lease hearing, the school board must approve the lease agreement and authorize the school board officers to execute such lease. This lease is the agreement whereby the school corporation will levy the required property tax to pay the lease payments throughout the life of the bond issue. The lease payments will be paid to the building corporation and used to pay the bondholders to repay the proposed bonds.
Hearing that, I would entertain a motion in a second to adopt resolution authorizing execution of lease. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Hoover. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ellis. Any discussion? Questions? All those in favor? Show of hands. Opposed? Abstained? 6-0, or, I'm sorry, 5-0-2, 4-0-2. Motion passed. Next is the motion to, do we already do that? Yeah. Okay, Mr. McCormick, could you please summarize the additional appropriation resolution?
Thank you, Mr. Beatty. The additional appropriation resolution outlines the appropriation of funds received for the sale of certain school facilities to the building corporation, where portions of the proposed projects will be constructed. The resolution also specifies that any such funds will be placed in a school corporation construction account separate from all other school corporation funds and spent only on the projects since the appropriation will be from bond proceeds.
Hearing that, I would entertain a motion to accept the additional appropriation resolution. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Dr. Pennington, second.
Second.
Mr. Ellis, any questions? Comments? All those in favor? Show of hands. Opposed? Abstained? 5-0-2. Mr. McCormick, would you please summarize the resolution reapproving the building corporation?
Thank you, Mr. Beatty. The next resolution is the resolution reapproving the building corporation. This resolution reapproves the formation of the building corporation for federal tax purposes.
Could I have a motion to adopt the resolution reapproving the building corporation?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Ellis.
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Hoover. Any questions? All those in favor? Opposed? Abstained? 5-0-2. Motion passes. Mr. McCormick, could you please summarize the resolution assigning bids, contracts, administrations?
Yeah, yes. The next resolution is the resolution assigning bids slash contracts to the building corporation. At the bond closing, the building corporation will own facilities where some of the renovation work will be completed. The building corporation will also be the issuer of the bonds. As a result, certain contracts may need to be with the building corporation because the building corporation will hold the money to pay the contractors. The school corporation receives the bids and/or contracts and awards the bids and/or contracts under state law, but then retains the right to assign those bids and/or contracts to the building corporation for payment at the discretion of the board.
Then it's this one. Could I have a motion to adopt the resolution assigning bids, contracts?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Ellis. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Pennington. Any questions? Comments? All those in favor? Opposed? Abstained? 5-0-2. And then, Mr. McCormick, would you please summarize the resolution of authorizing the supplement to the master continuing disclosure undertaking and issuance of bonds?
Thank you. This resolution satisfies the Securities and Exchange Commission requirement that a school corporation enter into a continuing disclosure undertaking agreement if it issues bonds to public investors. The agreement requires that the school corporation agree to timely provide certain financial information and provide notice of certain material events if and when they occur.
Could I have a motion to adopt the resolution authorizing the supplement to master continuing disclosure undertaking and issuance of bonds, please?
So moved.
Thank you, Dr. Pennington. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ellis. Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Opposed? And abstained? 5-0-2.
And I do want to publicly thank Mr. Eric Long, who's sitting patiently in the back. It's our bond counsel from Ice Miller. He was here at 5 o'clock to execute and work with the building lease corporation board members to sign those appropriate documents that are in tandem with what you just approved in this process. So, Mr. Long, thank you for making the trip to Indianapolis.
Thank you, Mr. Long.
Thank you.
Have a safe going home.
Will do. Our Southbound is open now.
Oh, there you go. It is. It is. Next up, NCI A Operating Under PCS Guidelines Resolution. Mr. McCormick?
This is just a resolution, since the, our North Central Indiana Academy is newly formed, you know, they certainly need to operate under guidelines, practices, policies. And since it's newly formed, it's being formulated, it will certainly be a work in progress as we calibrate it and dial within, but this resolution just simply says that the academy is going to operate under prude community schools' guidelines, policies, et cetera.
Thank you, Mr. McCormick. I trust you've all read that. I would entertain a motion to accept that as presented.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Justice. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Pollard. Any questions or comments? All those in favor? It is unanimous, thank you. School calendar.
You had an updated calendar laying kind of in your area when you got here, and thank you, Mr. Hoover, for, there was one little date error off in the right margin. But this is the proposed school calendar for '26, '27. We ran a couple of options through the teachers' union. The teachers gave great feedback. Actually, we shifted the Christmas break back to a more traditional-type format from their input. So, yeah, any questions at all you have on that proposed calendar?
Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to accept the calendar as presented.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Justice. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Pennington. Any comments or questions?
Was it May 24th? Looks like it was changed to 26th.
Yeah.
Okay. That's it.
Yeah. Anything else? All those in favor? It is unanimous, thank you. On to business, donations.
Number one, that may be an error where it says prude community schools. I don't, maybe you should say Parkview Sports Medicine. They are paying for half of the Huddle program. That was over $11,000. And as part of our partnership with them, I made a call, and they did a, took a quick vote, that being Parkview Sports Medicine, and agreed to pay for half of this year's, our subscription to Huddle, which is what a number of our sports teams use. And there, you know, the next question would be, well, is it gonna cost next year? Yeah, like $15,000 a year. But pretty much everyone in the state uses Huddle. And in addition to teams using it for scouting and self-evaluation, there are streaming opportunities. So as part of this, we will mount, you know, a high-tech camera in the main gym. I want to say, is it Tiger Den as well? No?
If I may.
Yes.
The camera was finished being mounted in the Tiger Arena this morning.
Thank you.
By Houston Electric. None of us really wanted to work 30 feet in the air above the chip floors, so Houston Electric came in and did that. And then we have the one to put on Bigga Memorial Stadium. So the arena will have one, and then the football stadium will have that mounted on the front of the campus.
Thank you, Mr. Snyder. So there will be, as we, as we all know, kind of post-COVID streaming. Those types of things kind of took off, and there's more to be worked out through this. Mr. Yates, we passed him, you know, there are potential revenue streams from, from streaming opportunities that could maybe help fund, you know, future years' subscription. There's also advertisement opportunities. So some of those things need to be worked out, but we pretty much were in a position where we needed to get going and up the ante with Huddle. So at any rate, that's the little backstory behind this donation.
How are we currently paying for our portion?
Mr. Yates will find...
Athletic.
Athletic monies, yeah, through, I want to say basketball, football. We might have five or six athletic programs that use Huddle for their internal purposes. So, you know, they may chip in some. The golf outing we recently had, the high school's third of that, I believe is gonna go towards that other part of Huddle. So I'm confident that it'll get taken care of and get put forward.
Are there grants or anything we can seek out, maybe?
Yeah, we'll explore all options moving forward.
Excellent. You've heard the recommendation. I would entertain a motion to accept the donation as presented.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Justice. Second?
Second.
Mr. Ellis, any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor? It is unanimous, thank you. Next up is early literacy endorsement. Ms. Kristy McGuire, 1,000 stipend for the early literacy... Uh, Ms. Kristy McGuire, one thousand stipend for the early literacy endorsement. Um, I would entertain a motion to accept that as presented.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Justice. Second?
Second. Mr. Hoover.
Thank you, Mr. Hoover. Any questions or comments? All those in favor? It is unanimous. Thank you. Moving on. Operations and technology. Mr. McCormick, would you like to present that, our facility rental schedule?
Yeah, and I'm gonna turn the floor over to Mrs. Sheets real quick. Uh, this, I, I give her a lot of credit. Um, she came to me and said, you know, our facility rental guidelines, fees were kind of wonky, lengthy. And so she went out and did some research, and so this would be the new rental fee schedule, and I'll let Mrs. Sheets chime in here.
Yeah, so this is pretty much what he'd said. Ours was like a lot of paragraph form. Um, a lot of like given a minimum charge and then additional this rate for this hour and that hour. It just didn't flow very well. So I reached out to some other schools and to make sure we were comparable on how much we charge, um, and went to some of their layouts. And so that's where I came up with the current layout you have in your packet. Um, at the bottom, you'll notice, um, personnel, we broke it down by hour for charging. Um, that was another mess on the old one. It was, you know, one and a half hours times this. It just, it never was clear. So now when someone calls and wants to rent, I'll have a clear hourly rate to tell them from the start of how much they're gonna be charged. Um, and then I think at the bottom there added, we still do the damage deposit. Um, like we, I think it was a couple of years ago that was added. And then just how we get the, the rates, how it's broke down with the benefits and the charges per hour for the personnel.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sheets. Any questions at all on the?
We have some of our M O Us, like early head start and that, where we use our in-kind.
Yes.
We kind of need to be careful. We don't have two rental agreements. That can get a little sticky. So I think that needs to be looked at.
Okay. At this time, I would entertain a motion to accept the facility rental schedule as presented.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Justice. Second?
Second.
Mr. Ellis, thank you. Any questions or comments?
It's pretty, uh, similar to other schools, what they're doing.
Yeah.
I like the fact that we have something now down, that we can be consistent with, you know. Excellent work. Um, all those in favor? It is unanimous. Thank you. Next, under personnel, um, reading through those, I would entertain a motion to accept those as presented all at once unless one would like to pull one out.
Motion to accept one through six.
Thank you, Ms. Justice. Second. Thank you, Dr. Quinn. Any questions? All those in favor? Thank you. Recommendation for certified positions, Amy Wilson, a special education at the junior senior high. Um, entertain a motion to accept that as presented.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Hoover. Second?
Second.
And Mr. Ellis, any questions? All those in favor? It is unanimous. Uh, recommendation for classified positions. Again, I would, uh, entertain a motion to accept one through four as presented, unless someone would like to pull one out.
Motion to accept one through four.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Fuller. Thank you, Ms. Justice. Any questions or comments? All those in favor? It is unanimous. Uh, recommendation for extracurricular activities. We have fourteen of those. I would entertain a motion to accept those.
I would like to make an extraction of the first number seven, since we have two sevens there.
Okay. Chris McCowsky, all right. So I would
It's actually one through fifteen, when I'm extracting him, right?
We're gonna, we're gonna vote on him separate.
Oh, okay, sorry.
We're gonna change that to seven and then
Seven A, seven B.
Seven B. So I would entertain a motion to accept this, one through six and seven B through fourteen.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Justice. Second?
Are you seconding? You're giving the second?
No.
Or are you asking for a second?
I was asking for one. Mr. Hoover, seconded. It's a little confusing. Any questions or comments? All those in favor? It is unanimous. Um, seven A, I would entertain a motion to accept that as presented.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Justice. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ellis. Questions?
Yes, it says it's only a winter position, and it's an assistant to the principal. What, what exactly does that entail? It seems like we already have a couple of assistants to the principal already.
There are three E C A, uh, positions. Ticket manager, yeah, ticket manager, um, concessions manager, and then there's the assistant to the principal. Is that correct, Ms. Inyer?
Yes, this is, one position's been split up into three.
Yeah, then this position being our athletic director, um, and, and even our prior athletic director, uh, had asked for more flexibility. And it, it was getting hard to ask someone to do those jobs, you know, all year long. Just people would say, well, I can only do it one season, but I can't do it on this other season, and so we
So is this to the principal or to the athletic director?
It's supervision. It, it's, it is word, it is worded kind of wonky, but it's, yeah, it's, it's a supervision position.
Thank you. Any other questions? All those in favor? It is unanimous. Thank you. Uh, recommendation for sub-teacher, custodian, nurse, bus driver, S R O positions. Um, looks like we have one, Terry B. Smith for sub-teacher for the district. I would entertain a motion to accept him as presented.
So moved. Second?
Thank you, thank you. Any questions or comments? All those in favor? It is unanimous. Next up, budget. Ms. Inyer, the floor is yours.
Uh, bringing you the claims tonight, and I will, I will just point out, yes, there's a lot of Amazon because we were extending a little end of our grants, which was supply money. So that was our primary provider for sat, supply money. So there is a lot of Amazon in there. And then I also just wanna point out real quick, we did get our first chart wells built, and that is their acro parent company is called Compass. So when you're looking through the claims, it is the Compass Group is actually chart wells. Are there any questions?
I answered it.
I love to say bigger.
Why are we getting so much compensation for two months? And that was a two-month bill, and also the startup cost in that two-month bill.
It was a hundred and ninety-three and a half.
Yes. So that's a little larger than what our normal bills will be, because that was some of that startup equipment they needed to get in and their signage. And then that was July through August.
Does that come out of the school lunch?
Yes, sir.
Hearing no other questions, I would entertain a motion to accept the claims as presented.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Justice. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Pennington. Anything else to add? All those in favor? It is unanimous. Thank you. Fund monitoring report.
Uh, for fund monitoring report, our education fund, as of the end of September, we've collected eighty-six percent and this first seventy-seven percent. And keeping on track, our salaries and benefits are the largest expenses for the state of Indiana, so we're doing good on that. Uh, debt service, we have had no activity there. We will not until December. Operations fund, we have collected fifty-one percent. Just as a reminder, that is because we only get property taxes in June, December. And we have expended seventy-one percent, and salaries and utilities is where our, our largest expenses lie on that one. Rainy day, we've had no activity this last month. Our twenty-twenty-two bond, we are continuing to spend down. It is getting smaller. I'm sure it is getting smaller. Um, but we still have a few projects that are encumbered on it, so we, we're still spending that one down, but we're getting there.
All that money is encumbered then?
Uh, all but ninety thousand, I guess.
So that is not encumbered whatsoever?
So, yeah, what, what you see there is, is the money that we still have to, to spend.
Is there a deadline we have to spend that by? Sorry?
We, we've gotten some extensions on that, so, but we are spending that for all the little projects that come up for maintenance routine stuff as we move into the newer bonds. So this has been helping us get through to that. Then the twenty-twenty-four bond, we are starting to see some work orders of stuff, stuff's happening, so we will be getting, we've been getting some small bills from that. So more bills will be coming in, in the next few months. And then our food service fund, as I pointed already, we did receive our first chart wells bill. It was fully funded. Um, now that October has started, the new cycle of the new food service budget year has started. So we should be starting to get our money here in the next month for the beginning of the school year. It has been submitted. We're just waiting for it to come in. And so we're looking good there.
So we don't anticipate getting any lower than where we are right now?
No. We have funds coming in. Any questions?
Motion to accept the fund monitoring report?
Thank you, Ms. Justice. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ellis. Any questions or comments? All those in favor? It is unanimous. Um, next up is board comments. Um, I would like to congratulate all of our principals during principal month. Thank you for all you do, and we have one here. Thank you, Mr. Matthews. Any other comments?
I do. I made a boo-boo. I didn't realize until I went to sign the minutes for Brooke. Um, I need to fix the spelling of Dr. Quinn's name on one, two, three, four, five, six votes from last month.
Wow.
Um, I don't think, there's an extra in.
I thought there was somebody else in there getting me off the hook.
You know, I couldn't let you. Um, I don't think we can go back, so maybe we need to bring this up again next month.
Yeah.
And vote on fixing it.
I will look into that, on our correction.
Okay, thank you.
I think we should get to that.
I apologize.
Not a problem. Any other comments? Mr. McCormick?
Thank you, Mr. Beatty. Um, a few things. First, I wanna thank, uh, Mrs. Sheets. You know, while many people were gone last week on fall break, she put a lot of time in getting ready for this meeting. Uh, appreciate all of her extra efforts. Uh, she, she really went into overdrive, so thank you. I wanna thank the P C E A, the officers, uh, for their professional professionalism during collective bargaining. Uh, certainly the, you know, my second year as superintendent here, and I had to walk into collective bargaining with in less than desirable conditions based off legislation. And, uh, we're committed to working together in the coming months to make sure that we're in a much better position this time next year, but I wanna thank the P C E A for their professionalism. I wanna thank, um, Ms. Truax and, uh, Mrs. Nightingale for their positive comments, uh, that they make, uh, here at the board meetings. I do wanna make a brief comment, um, and just kind of follow up with some of the comments that, the public comments that are made to start off many of our board meetings. Uh, we have excellent licensed administrators that are very caring, and they deal with discipline of all types every day, just as all school districts do. Couple of things. I think it needs to be noted that somewhere lost in the narrative, the word bullying gets thrown around a lot. Could there be a fight in a cafeteria? Yes, but a fight isn't bullying. There are all kinds of, you know, things that happen. Small things, big things in a school district within a school day, a week, et cetera. But there's this narrative being tossed around that the school district promotes or doesn't do anything about it, and that's just not true. It's, it's patently false. And I guess I would, uh, you know, use an analogy of the dentist. You know, when people come to them for cavities, but the community blames the dentist for all the cavities in the community. It's not the dentist's fault. The dentist, or whatever doctor it is, is just treating and dealing with the community. But yet if someone stands back and blames the dentist for all the cavities and dental issues in town, that's not fair, in my humble opinion. So that's my loose analogy of, there are some things being twisted, uh, on social media and otherwise that, you know, just aren't true. This week later, uh, we will have our initial, uh, we've formed a district-wide behave, student behavior committee, where we'll have representatives from all buildings, administration, and so I think that's, it's this week or next is our initial meeting. So we take student behavior of all kinds, good behavior, poor behavior, very seriously. And, you know, we, we deal with it. Our administrators do a good job. To the last point, the narrative of, um, legalities. There, for confidentiality reasons, as well as logistics, I mean, it's challenging enough for our administrators, our teachers, to handle student discipline issues. Now all of a sudden, we have to pull in an outside parent group? We wouldn't get anything done. In addition to breaking confidentiality, I don't care what he says. You, you redact thi, I mean, there are I E Ps, special education considerations. A whole host of confidentiality dynamics, as well as just logistics. It, it would be impossible. So I go back to, just like every school district in the state, we have professional licensed administrators and teachers and staff that do a good job, uh, of managing and handling discipline in our school district.
Thank you, Mr. Beatty. Thank you, Mr. McCormick. Anyone else? I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you.